Welcome everyone to the work session on this beautiful sunny day. We are going to start out with an update on the City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee. And that will be presented by Allison Wicks and Scott Stoffer.
Great, thanks for having us. I will share my screen and kick us off. All right, does that look good for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. So, good afternoon. I'm Allison Wicks, the City Milwaukee Development Project Manager. I'm here with Scott. If you want to introduce yourself, Scott.
Good afternoon. Scott Stoffer, City Recorder, co-staff liaison to the Blue Ribbon Committee with Allison.
And we're here to share an update on the City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee and talk about our upcoming public engagement. I am in charge of the slides. There we go. So, we're going to review the charter at a high level that the committee agreed to, our project schedule, go over our first two meetings, and then talk about upcoming public engagement. So, just as a reminder, the City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee is made up of 13 people and one alternate. Scott and I are the staff supporting the committee, and Wilda is the council liaison. Each member represents another city board, or committee, or a neighborhood. In our first two meetings, we discussed the charter, and the group recently agreed to the charter. And the purpose in the charter includes both the committee purpose and the ground rules. The purpose is to learn about different aspects of the project, including operations and maintenance, financial requirements, history and conditions of the building, and then the overall real estate market in Milwaukee. The committee will then develop goals for a future request for proposal for a city council to consider, and will nominate two members to sit on the Request for Proposals Review Committee. And the committee will also help with public engagement activities. And we'll talk a little bit later about how we've adjusted those due to COVID. So, this is just a reminder of our high-level timeline and kind of how the current City Hall aligns with our new City Hall project. So, we are in public engagement today. So, our City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee is part of our public engagement process. And through that process, along with additional open houses, we're going to define community goals. And those goals will be a part of the eventual Request for Proposals process. Before that, we have to declare the property surplus and have a public hearing. And hopefully, all of this lines up with about when our, the city will be taking possession of new City Hall. This is our City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee schedule at a high level. We've already had two meetings, and our third meeting is next week. And then, in November, we'll be hosting the first part of a web-based open house with our new Bang the Table platform to gather community input on values and what people think will be important for the future of the site. Then, we'll host a second web-based open house to share the draft goals with the community. Then, we'll come to city council to recommend those goals for the Request for Proposals process. With that, I'll hand it over to Scott to talk a little bit about what we covered in our first two meetings.
Thank you, Allison. And we've had a really good first two meetings with this group. I know our city and our community has a lot of community engagement, but I'm not really ashamed to say that this is a real all-star of our community, Hall of Fame perhaps maybe. But some really good discussions we've had so far. We're getting, we're still in that phase where we're sinking our teeth into the situation and the parameters and all the good details. But we've also, I like to share that we've also had good turnout. Really, the group is not only engaged in where this goes, but just wants to be engaged with each other. And it's really quite unfortunate this is happening during a pandemic, because I just always come away from our Zoom meetings feeling like this, these were good Zoom meetings, but imagine what it would have been if we were able to do this in person. So, they've been great meetings, great attendance. Even when some folks are unable to attend, just, you know, the usual scheduling conflicts, we've made sure that we can catch those folks up with separate meetings. So, our first meeting, long ago back in July, we focused on the history of the site and did a walking tour of video. I took photos of the building and then presented it. And honestly, I probably talked too much during that first meeting, but we talked about the history of the site and did a virtual walking tour. So, next slide, Allison. And here are some of the slides we showed. I think councils maybe heard these, heard me talk about the history of the site. So, we kind of touched on it and have it happened to the city throughout history. And then, the second part of our first meeting, so the first part was, here's the site, here's the history of the site where we are now. And then, we talked about, started the conversation about public engagement and the public engagement level that we are looking for in terms of getting the committee's feedback, and then, the community's input on those development goals that we're going to be marching towards and presenting to council in March. Allison, do you want to add anything about that engagement part of it from that first meeting?
Just that we kind of use the IEP2 framework. So, kind of this project is, you know, we're going to be using all of these tools between inform, consult, involve, and collaborate. So, the committee itself is on the collaboration, and where maybe a pilot article is on the inform end.
Yep. And the other discussion we had at that first meeting was about our charter. They really sank their teeth in the charter, and there was a little bit of verbiage change that they proposed, and the group accepted. So, yeah. So, we talked about, that's more what we, what we had at one point before the pandemic on the left, the typical two kind of things we had imagined we'd be doing in terms of engagement with this committee, and then, what we are going to be able to do because COVID alternatives. So, virtual tours and the web-based open house that Allison will talk about here in a little more, a few minutes, online survey, really pushing and using that new tool that's coming with Bang the Table, really having to shift everything, and we haven't really been able to make much plan to go to the market, but we know that the market's been around. So, that's, that's sort of the shift that we've talked about. And then, our second meeting, we had in September, August, with vacations sort of slid into a September meeting. And so, we had a presentation from the State Historic Preservation Office, talked about, that was largely about process, and a lot of that discussion was about what will happen once there's a purpose in mind. There was some comparison to the library project, because we, that was a fairly intense SHIPO process that the city went through in terms of mitigating what was being replaced. And it's kind of hard to have that conversation when you're not 100% sure what the next use of the building will be. So, but it was good to hear, and SHIPO is a great resource, and that was a good conversation the committee had from that. Next slide. And so, again, we referenced the library project and some of the ideas that could, the mitigation ideas that could be done here at City Hall. Again, kind of hard to know what you're going to do with that until you know what's going to happen here, but yeah. And this is a good segue, so I'll just say that Jason Wax from City Manager's Office joined us, and we talked about engagement tools and how the committee will be helpful and drafting the questions that will be asked in the online open house and what that whole thing looks like. So, Allison.
Yeah. So, we're going to be one of the first projects to use the new Bang the Table platform. Here are a couple of examples from Wilsonville and City Eugene are already using it. I have a training next week on the platform, so excited to learn kind of more about the, what's available within the platform to host our open house. We're going to be promoting the open houses in a variety of ways. So, we're asking our City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee members to share it back with the boards and the neighborhood district associations that they're a part of. We'll promote it on social media, we'll have information in the pilot. So, looking to kind of both get community input on their values for the future of the site, but then also just to kind of start getting the word out that there will eventually be a new user at City Hall. So, we have, so our next things on the docket are our meeting number three next week, and then, hosting the open house in November and December. And all the information and links to the, I assume, once we have our Bang the Table page up and running, will be on our webpage.
And just to throw out there, it's a public meeting, and so, we haven't been recording the City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee meetings, but the Zoom link is made available on the city's milwaukeeorgan.gov/meetings page. And we've started a City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee subscription, email subscription list. So, if anybody's interested in following along and getting those alerts, they can go to milwaukeeorgan.gov/subscription or subscribe, I forget which one of those words, but enter that, and you can sign up for City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee updates.
Right, that's all we had, so we can open it up for any questions.
And I think, oh, get out of full screen mode. I think I saw Tracy Orvis, who's on our committee, is here. And we didn't have any formal plans, but Tracy, you're on here. You'd like to throw out any comments or your observations?
Will does.
I'll put you on the spot, I suppose, a little bit. She's, so. Did you want to say something, Tracy? Sorry, I just saw your screen.
Sorry. No, I just, I really just wanted to kind of sit in and listen and see if there were any questions specific to committee members. Just really excited to be a part of this process, having worked with the existing City Hall on previous projects before. I feel very vested in what happens to it, so I'm excited to see where this leads.
Thank you for being part of our committee. So, I think, to go back to Allison's question then, that's where we are. We've got a good roadmap going forward. Does anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts?
I guess I, could you just kind of explain again what you expect the open house and the, is there an open house and a survey? The survey's part of the open house, I assume. I mean, you kind of used both words, but what you expect the questions that you'll be putting forward to be?
Yeah, in this first phase, we actually have a subcommittee of the City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee that's helping with questions. And so, it's really looking at values for the site. So, it'll be, what do you want the site to feel like in the future? How do you want to use it? So, not looking for specific ideas for the new use, but more how you want it, what your, what your values are for the site. So, we'll do that probably through, a little bit through storytelling, and then also a survey feature in Bang the Table.
And will that conversation have some context around the financial constraints around the website? Like, or around the City Hall? Like, we can't, we can't promise the moon.
Yeah, that's actually a topic for our, our next City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee. Scott and I have had conversations with Anne and Leila around, like, what are our financial constraints? And those will definitely be the side rails of the conversation.
And that will work its way into the open house as well. I was also wondering what sort of discussion you had had or were planning to have around outreach to other parts of the community. I wonder about this, because we've done a great job of, of creating a really good integration with the NDAs and with our boards and commissions in the makeup of the committee. But we also have heard from our community survey that very few residents, on a percentage basis, actually go to the NDAs for information about what's happening in the city. So, I'm, I know this is a topic, this is a learning, leading edge for us all. So, I'm just wondering how that is playing out in this committee in particular.
We've talked about a couple of sort of general get-the-word-out ideas. So, you know, definitely a pilot article. We've also talked about maybe a bookmark for folks at the library. So, something that the library can hand out with people that are checking out books. We haven't committed to doing this, but we've also talked about the idea of any, like, specific focus groups. And so, if we were able to sort of narrow in on a community that we know isn't necessarily getting information from the Facebook page or the city website, that we could maybe use the liaison model of having someone organize a group for us to reach some of those folks that wouldn't normally participate in a web-based open house. I think that's one piece for, while it's important to me to gather some demographic information in our web-based open house, so we can see those kind of gaps in who we're reaching.
And I know you haven't done the training yet, so you probably don't have an answer to this question. But I can only assume, and at this point in the 21st century, that Bang the Table has really good mobile app presentations, so that with your accessing it by phone, it looks good and you can use it?
I don't know, but if anyone else has used it or knows more than me.
I've only known that, I've heard and seeing that some of the links that we've been providing, and Allison had screenshots, that I think so. Now, there was another, another software package that we were, that the city was looking at at one point that also had some pretty good graphics. So, I would think and hope so, but that's as much as I've seen.
And I think the only thing I would add is that I'm hearing from you, Councilor Haisi, that you'd really like there to be a very good interface for web users who are using their phones. So, yes, we can also take that back to the engagement team.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, people who don't have laptop computers, it's a barrier if it doesn't play with cell phones.
And I couldn't make up an answer making assumptions, but I don't want to do that tonight, and that seems not on here. But my assumption would be that, yes, it'll work well with cell phones because of the day and age we're working on this. But, but I'll get you the correct answer.
Great, thanks. Allison, I just want to say thumbs up on the collecting information about respondents. I think that's hugely important, so appreciate that.
Sounds like generally, council is happy with where we're going with this. Sounds like you feel like this is hitting the boxes. If anything comes up or you hear anything in the community, as especially if people are taking the survey, that you think we need to know in preparation or in response to how we put the survey out or how we're talking about these topics, let us know. This is still a longish process. We've got months ahead of us. And this is all as a reminder with preparation time, because the city's not actually leaving this building for another, I think, almost two full years, so that we have time to, to structure this without rushing.
Scott, I'm just noticing that recording is showing up and then disappearing in the corner of my screen.
Oh.
Everything working okay?
Yeah, we're hearing, is, is somebody, uh?
It's just me.
Okay. We are recording via Zoom. We are recording it. So, if somebody in Zoom land wants to add their own recording button and capture a version, that's fine. It's also on YouTube and Comcast Cable Channel 30 and City Limits.
Is the, is this going to be in the November pilot and the, the, the open house is going up in November? Or is it not until December?
It will not be in the November pilot. It will be in the December pilot. And then, I'm working out with CPIC and kind of staff capacity around when we'll time it, because there's another open house, and if we want to have two at once, and then avoiding other things going on in November and holidays, et cetera.
Sounds great.
Okay, is that it, everybody? Good job, good report. Thanks for the, getting us caught up. Look forward to more. Our next item is Design and Landmarks Committee, the annual report, and that will be presented by Brett Kelver. Do you have any members, Brett?
I do. I have one right now. We're, we're just a little bit early. I'm expecting maybe, maybe three more, but Tracy Orvis is here with us. She's, she's been on the DLC for a little over a year now, I think. I think Evan Smiley is one of our members who wasn't going to be able to make it today. I think she had a work conflict, but I am anticipating that Cynthia Schuster, who's the chair, will be able to join us. Brett Lorela is the vice chair, as far as I know, he's available. And Mary Neustatter also should be available. So, hopefully, they'll, they'll come in here in a little bit. In the meantime, I can jump in and get started, if that's all right, if you'd prefer. Yeah, okay. Well, so, good afternoon, Mayor Gamba, councilors. I'm Brett Kelver, Associate Planner with the City of Milwaukee. And I have been serving for the last several years as the staff liaison to the Design and Landmarks Committee or DLC. I think we, we have an annual meeting with you as council to go over the, the work plan. And I think we, due to schedule timing, we actually did our annual meeting with you in January of 2020. So, we're, we're maybe 10 months or so out from that. I think that's just the way the, the schedule works. So, here we are again. It's good to see you. We actually have had no changes in our committee membership for this past year. So, we have had a nice run of stability on the, on the committee. And the group has been pretty engaged over the, the past year. The main focus on working to update our downtown design review process. I think we talked to you about that in January. And I think shortly after that, that January meeting with you, we, we were able to engage a code-writing consultant from Jet Planning. Her name's Elizabeth Decker. She has been helping us try to hone in some of the language that we've been working on in the draft to kind of get it, get it closer to, to being ready to, to move forward for some discussions with the planning commission and with you at such point as the schedule works out. And again, to, to recap, I think you're all pretty familiar with this. I mean, I know you have a lot of other things happening, but the concept hasn't changed. What we are trying to do with this project is take the, the current downtown design guidelines, which apply to new development or significant redevelopment that happens in the downtown core area. Right now, those design guidelines live outside the code. They're referenced in a, in a separate document. And there are a lot of specific guidelines, and they do not all match up directly with the design standards for downtown that we have in the code itself. So, there are a couple of sections of, of the zoning code that relate to downtown and downtown design. And the, the focus of this project has been to try to, to bring those guidelines back into the code in a way that's kind of similar to the, the standards and the guidelines that we have for multifamily housing, for example, where it's all in the code, and there are a couple of routes you can go in terms of what kind of review you're willing to go through. So, we wanted to just pull the guidelines for downtown design into the code as well. That's been the, the focus, and there's, there's a lot of detail that's involved. And so, there've been a lot of kind of fine tuning and looking at different concepts as we move through the different design elements for that. And I think we're getting close to a point where we'll be ready to, to go to the planning commission, at least in a work session kind of way, and just, you know, to give them an update. We haven't talked to them in a while as a group about, about how things are looking with that, and we'll want to get some feedback from them. This evening, we'd be interested, I know you haven't, we're not presenting the draft code to you, and I think we'd be interested to get any feedback or ideas from you, just in general, about, you know, with the things that you've been working on as a council, your awareness of what's happening with, with development in general. Maybe what might be helpful for the group is if, if you have any thoughts or questions, if there have been concerns that have come up for you in the past year, you know, related to other things that you'd like to put out there for this group to kind of keep in mind as they're moving forward and working on the downtown design piece. Our overall approach to this project has been to make it, I guess we're calling it policy neutral. You know, it wasn't that long ago that the downtown design standards were updated kind of as a result of the Moving Forward Milwaukee project. And so, you know, this, the, the work we're doing doesn't represent a sea change in any of that design framework largely that the, that the city has already established. It's more about trying to pull the, the details of the structure and the process all into alignment. But in terms of highlights of a couple of things that, you know, may represent the types of, of changes, you know, for example, just looking at the, the list of exterior building materials. The group has spent some time looking at that. It's been a number of years since that, the, the base list of those materials was updated. And so, there, you know, there's some tweaks, adjustments to things that might be considered secondary materials or accent materials. There's been some discussion about, instead of trying to, well, the focus on trying to have in the table what materials are allowed and, and to take out some of the materials that are currently in the table is being prohibited. The idea is like, why are we, why are we saying what things shouldn't be done? We want to focus on what materials we'd like to have. And understanding that architecture and building and design is an ongoing, constantly evolving process, it's hard to capture every new innovation in a material in the table. And so, the group has the idea of wanting to just establish a, maybe it's a type-two review process, where if, if a material is not presented in the table, maybe the planning manager, with the consultation of the DLC, would be able to help determine whether that material would fit in with the, the design. So, so looking at trying to add a little bit of flexibility and some options there. There's, you know, one of the, one of the things that was a big issue that we ran into with the Axel Tree project, I think they, they needed a variance request related to the step back, you know, for going over the base maximum height. There was a requirement to set the building back, and, and that design was proposing not to do that. And so, again, in this realm, to try to add a little bit more flexibility or an option, I think there's a proposal to allow a choice between either, you know, maybe a six-foot step back for, let's say, 50% of the street-facing facade of a building, or adding some balconies for that same distance. So, rather than having just a one simple, hard-and-fast, either in-or-out way, trying to just add a little bit of flexibility that seemed to provide kind of a similar design effect. And once I get out of the way, I definitely want to ask some of the members if they want to elaborate on any of these concepts or talk about anything that has interested them, as we've discussed. A couple of the ideas that we've been discussing, we're not sure if they're going to actually make it into the, the proposal, but was considering allowing a reduction in the required amount of open space for certain projects where they're adjacent to or just across the street from an existing park. The idea would be, there is already a nice open space amenity there. Maybe there's a way to get a little bit more housing and use some space with that acknowledgement instead of requiring additional open space on the site. And then, another, another question or concept that's come up, you know, right now for, it relates to bonus heights. So, allowing an additional story for certain things. Right now, the code says that if you have a certified green building, you can get one additional story. If, you can get another additional story if you're providing housing or, or lodging. And then, another concept that I think might be a little bit harder to, to actually implement would be, we've talked a little bit about, is there any kind of allowance for a bonus for providing affordable housing? That would obviously require a little bit more complicated system of how, you know, what to set as a level for affordable housing. How do you track it? What are the, what are the rules and requirements? Is it in perpetuity, that kind of thing? But it's been, it's been good, I think, that the group has been, you know, talking about these kinds of things and just trying to explore other ways to achieve some of the city's, some of the city's goals. So, you know, there, there, in terms of other items in the, in the group's work plan, I'll say this, and then I'll just get out of the way. You know, as, as we move towards Um, you know, as, as we move towards, um, the end of this particular project, you know, hoping that within the next, you know, several months or half year, we might be in a position where the group could start shifting its focus to something else. I think one of the things we've been looking at and that has been kind of in a placeholder spot, um, in the parking lot of that, the DLC's work plan is starting to turn its attention a little bit more to historic preservation and, and seeing what can be done to, to update and, uh, upgrade the city's rules for that. So that's what I'll say by way of introduction. I think we have several more of the members here now. I think we have everyone else. Uh, like I said, Evan Smiley wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, but we do have, uh, Cynthia, I believe is here. Is she? Maybe not. Well, maybe not. We have Brett Lorela, who's the vice chair. We have Tracy Orvis and we have Mary Newstatter, uh, who are all here. So if any of you guys want to say anything about the work that you've been doing, um, and/or, you know, however you guys want to handle this as the council, if you want to ask, uh, ask any questions, we'd love to get into discussion with you about, about your thoughts about things. So do any of the DLC members want to say anything to elaborate on the work you've been doing for the past year? Not everyone at once, please.
We had Brett, but we lost him, huh?
Looks like he's there in two spots now.
Oh, okay. I don't see him at all.
Oh, Brett Lorela. Okay. The other Brett.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Well, so, um, I'm intrigued by the idea of, of a bonus, um, on affordable housing. And I think it would be interesting in these conversations, you know, when, when we establish sort of our base height and then kind of maxed it out at five in most of the downtown, there was a lot of concern, uh, about how huge a five-story building would be and that it would create canyons and all of those, you know, all this doom and gloom language. And I think now that we have one and it doesn't even have step backs, I would imagine that most people are like, yeah, who cares? It's not so big. So, um, you know, perhaps something in those lines where affordable housing can get you some more. Another floor, I, I think is an interesting, interesting thing for you guys to explore. And just so you can not reinvent the wheel, um, what typically goes with bonuses, uh, of, of all different varieties on, um, affordable housing is a 30-year guarantee that it stays affordable for 30 years. That's kind of the standard. There are, there are longer ones for sure, but that's, that's a standard.
I think as far as, uh, as far as I'm concerned and just my experience with the committee, uh, one thing I've really enjoyed is, is our, we have really good conversations about context, um, and about the downtown area as a whole and what does that feel like? How do we set these, these standards up and these, this guidance up so that we're creating a downtown area that still has some variation, but that doesn't have that kind of Disneyland type feel. There's like a fine balance to that. And I feel like we've really tried to be sensitive to that, um, when working through this so that, that we get some nice variation without, um, without it feeling too intentional. So if that makes sense.
As you're thinking about, um, your future work, I, I just want to throw in, and you probably already have been thinking about this Brett, but, um, you know, we are going to start doing that URA work and that committee is forming in the next couple of months. And downtown is in very much a part of that. So I don't, I don't know, um, precisely what the intersection would be with DLC's work, but just kind of a, hey, this is happening too. So, um, kind of keep it on your radar.
Okay. Yeah. That's something we can definitely work into the, we can at least acknowledge in the work program, I think. Are there, and again, I realize that, um, this is kind of in this broad context of, of just talking with you as the council. I guess I, I wonder if, if, if you imagine, uh, if we were getting to a point where we were talking about actually, um, you know, proposing certain updates, are there, are there, are there any other design considerations or issues that you've been thinking about or hearing about in the community? That, that if we were talking about this tonight and kind of like, we, we're going to adopt these new rules, would, you would be thinking of and wanting to, to bring to the fore? Whether it's about, I don't know, uh, height restrictions or like you were saying, Mayor, Mayor, uh, you know, the idea of finding ways to kind of encourage affordable housing or there, I don't know, any, any, anything's related to, to design or building type or format or anything like that, that you've come across in conversations with folks.
Brett, just last week, we were just, um, sort of discussing, um, you know, our CET and, and the, that we might need to revisit that conversation around, you know, kind of our affordability, um, requirements, both income and, and me, you know, and there might, there might be some guidance there. Not in that conversation, but in just that, that we discussed having this conversation, you know, again. So, you know, maybe look forward to that and maybe incorporating that into any conversation you have about, you know, affordability bonuses.
Okay. And CET, that's the construction excise tax. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Sorry. And just, and URA is urban renewal area. Is that right? Okay. Sorry. Yeah. Spelled those out. Okay.
I think I would just underline what Tracy's already mentioned, that, um, that variability of height is really important, um, because that, that is one of the ways that you do avoid Disneylanding. It also has positive climate impacts for making sure that, um, air fluctuation and movement through the space is, is good. And, um, the best, you know, if, if all the buildings are the same height, it stagnates. And, and there are people who are still really uncomfortable with taller buildings in downtown. So I think the more that the messaging that comes out from the DLC that, that you do value the variation in height and that you're not looking to make it a canyon land. Uh, I think that is beneficial, um, just, just for the public to keep hearing that, that downtown is going to remain charming and, um, and lovely. And it's just going to have hopefully more people in it so that we can support our small businesses downtown and make them really viable.
All right. That's a good point.
I guess, um, an issue that's been on my mind is about, you know, the activating the sidewalk. And I'm sure that's something you guys are very cognizant of, but just, um, we have several businesses on our main street that have, you know, shuttered windows, um, and storage even behind those windows, um, not what we really want on our main street. And I will say that this is personal, this is an opinion, but, um, I thought the DLC did a great job negotiating, uh, the art on Axel Tree. I did not think the execution of the art on the, um, the ones that are supposed to have light behind them worked turned out very satisfactory personally. Um, but it was a, I mean, it's a, it was a, uh, it was a good design and, and, you know, it was a way to try and at least have something on a, on a front that, that didn't have windows. So, I mean, I appreciate that you guys, um, you know, took all that very seriously and, and, uh, yeah, I am concerned about, you know, just how we, um, I mean, we actually amazingly have new businesses during COVID. I was really worried when the pandemic hit that, you know, we would have more empty storefronts in downtown Milwaukee. We actually have fewer than we did when the pandemic hit. So that's been a nice thing. But, um, I do think just trying to keep the sidewalk active and the windows open and that kind of thing is important.
It sounds, it sounds like even more spaces are about to be filled too than what we've seen. I, I, when you said variability, I pictured more variability in design, although I utterly agree with the concept of varying heights. But, um, I wonder, I'm wondering if any city has ever done some kind of standard where, you know, there's this menu of design aspects to choose from. And, uh, one of the things you can't do is be cookie cutter to an adjacent building or cookie cutter to a building, another building on the block or some, something where, where there have to be significant design differences between adjacent buildings or buildings within the same block or something like that. I, I don't know if that's ever been tried. I don't know. I'm sure it opens up a ridiculous can of worms, but, um, it, it, it would help with the, you know, with the, the beauty of, of having variable style buildings.
I wonder if, yeah, if any of the members on, on the committee, um, especially those of you who, who work in the architecture part of things could maybe speak to that or share some perspective or experience, um, both professionally for you and then also kind of how you've been understanding or, or thinking about what, what we're working with right now, what we're trying to set up in that sense of, uh, how, how good is the setup for providing that kind of menu of choices that, that get you good design without forcing people into certain, um, predictable, uh, patterns or designs? What do, what do you guys who work in this, what do you see and what, what do you think about?
Well, I think I can speak. I think that that was one of the things that we considered as we went through all of our objectives because I think the older zoning code, I mean, obviously the current, um, code was a little more restrictive and had some design elements in there that would have just kind of forced you into sort of a, you know, tall skinny building and, you know, basically, no, I'm saying tall skinny building. We say a brick building with tall skinny windows that would kind of be marching along at some rhythm, um, which is for, you know, it's more indicative of historic architecture. Where now I think we're going to have more elements that they can actually design around and will have a little more variation and choice. Is my opinion. Anybody else want to comment on that?
Sure. I'll say something. I, I think, I think that, that was one of our primary goals and it was, it was all kind of about balance, about giving people those options while still setting up just some, some basic parameters for them to follow. So you get some, some kind of looser sense of cohesiveness, but you still have this, this palette of options to choose from so that you get the opportunity to provide some variation and whether that's height or materiality or creating variation in the facade so that you get some nice, interesting shadow lines between buildings. We tried to take all of those different aspects into consideration so that you can kind of achieve that balance. Cause one thing you want to try and avoid is having a, a downtown area that looks like it was developed all at once. I mean, some of the most intriguing downtown areas are those that look like they've developed naturally over time. So, or I think one of our goals was to try and, and create that as closely as possible or really help designers and developers have some options to work with to create that variation.
Well, and we've, we've also wanted to, um, you know, really encourage downtown to develop and to, to make developers feel like this is a place that they can work. And so streamlining processes and keeping, keeping that balance between here's some options that are really cool and not overwhelming with, you know, an avalanche of information is, that's sort of a delicate point to, to balance on, you know, I think, um, I don't live in this world, so you all know better than I do, but I would, you know, that you could easily create a lot of work that is great. It, it leads to great outcomes, but it greatly reduces the number of people who actually want to do much in downtown, you know, and we, we can't get away from the fact that we need to get more people downtown in order to have it be a thriving place. And we've got so many great ingredients there. We've got so much great transit access and we've got parks nearby. And, you know, we're so close to, to really activating that area, um, that I just want to be mindful that we keep moving in that direction.
With, with that in mind, I guess I wonder what, what the council thinks in general off the cuff about, uh, you know, one of the things that, that the group has talked about a little bit is, you know, we are trying to establish or, and maintain like a, a baseline of design principles that if, um, where you have the option to go through basically an administrative type of review, where there's not discretion from the DLC or from the planning commission, we're still getting good, you know, really good design because of the, the baseline that's been set up. There's been some discussion about, is there a tipping point? Is there a critical point in terms of size or scale of a building? That as much as we want to encourage developers to come to Milwaukee and to feel like the, you know, the processes are streamlined and, um, and it's, you know, it's relatively easy to do your project here. Is there, is there any, you know, building size or scale that is, um, so large, whether by square footage or, I don't know, a, a block or something like that where you'd say, even if you could show us as the architect or as the developer, that you can meet all of our administrative checkboxes to go through a simple process, the scale of this project is still large enough that we would like as a city, as a community to have the opportunity to introduce a little bit of discretion there. I'm just, just, just a temperature taking, I guess of how, how do you feel about, about that concept? Is something so big that you want to, you'd like to have some discretionary review at some level?
My reaction to that is I think that we, we have to, I mean, if we're going to apply standards that, that folks meet, then it has to be, it has to be objective across the board. And I'm not, you know, I'm, I, I don't know. I mean, if, if Justin's got a question or, you know, might have some questions about that. It seems to me like, I, I mean, simply based on size, um, you know, and unless we've got some sort of a, like, you know, a, a requirement in our code that says, you know, we don't allow buildings of a certain size, I guess it seems to me like it would be pretty, um, problematic for us to, to say, well, you know, this building can go through this clear and objective process, but this one can't, just based on some, uh, you know, I, I mean, I think that that would have to be that, uh, my knee jerk reaction is I'm not sure we get there very well unless we write some pretty specific code that passes must, that passes muster.
Well, I guess I think, um, I mean, I don't, yes, I disagree with that. I think as a legal matter, that's a, you know, a dicey proposition. As a practical matter though, we, uh, if we're not going to do that, I think that makes us want to have the standards be higher, right? If we had a threshold where everything that's, you know, a, a full block is going to get the review and things that are smaller, uh, might be able to go through clear and objective, then, then we might be willing to go with, you know, sort of a lower threshold for the clear and objective. Then if, if, if it's going to be, if it's going to apply to potentially full blocks of downtown, I will want to see it be pretty, um, iron plaid, I guess, I would say. So it's an interesting discussion point for whatever you ultimately bring forward, I think. You know, to public hearing, I think, you know, that's an interesting issue.
Yeah. I, I, my, my, off the top of my head reaction is yes, there probably is a building that's too big. But then again, it, you know, a building with the right kind of architecture and variability and appeal, maybe not. So, you know, I'm kind of between Lisa and, and Angel saying, there might be a building that's too big unless it's amazing. And so if we can set a, a clear and objective standard that gets you to amazing, then and objective standard that gets you to amazing, then.
As you say, who decides it's amazing if you're an objective standard?
I know.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, I really struggle with the idea that like, you know, we can suggest, I mean, it's one thing to have height standards, but that's not what we're saying. Like, we'll, we have that in our code. And so to say though, that like, there, there is no clear objective path for a bill, for a certain type of building, I don't think that that is in, I mean, there's just, to me, that sounds unreasonable and likely to fail a challenge. Like, there has to be a clear and objective path for someone to develop their property, right? I mean.
I think there has to be for housing. Didn't we, wasn't that the whole discussion around necessary housing or needed housing or whatever?
And we allow housing in all of our downtown.
Yeah.
So in the city of, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to bring up an example of City of Portland where I think that they're cut off in some, some areas is like 22,000 square feet. And so everything below that can just go the clear and objective path. And everything above that still has to meet the, all of the standards, but then they get the design looked at. So that's kind of where the threshold is. So it's kind of like a design overlay, right?
So it's a review of the design?
Yes.
Not the clear and objective stand. That's, okay.
Correct.
That's a little different than I think what we're talking about though.
Yeah.
No?
No.
No, that's, that is what I was talking about.
Okay. Well, maybe I heard it wrong, but I, I definitely was hearing something a little bit different.
So I, I'll just throw out a crazy hypothetical. Let's say somebody comes down and picks up six blocks of the city. And I've been to cities where streets go through a tunnel in a building and they, they develop all six blocks into one building with tunnels for the streets. Are we cool with that? So I, you know, I.
Well, see, here's, here's the thing. Here's the thing that I think you guys are all hitting on, on the relevant points of this. And that is in Mark and your example, where we were heading with this was, well, if you can show me that your six block building can meet all of the objective, all of the objective standards for design with respect to, you know, pedestrian activation, height, massing, exterior materials, all those things, if you can meet all of them, then, you know, if we've done a good job setting up, you know, like Lisa said, setting the, the standard high enough that if you do these things, then you should have a pretty good looking building. I think what, what Cynthia has been trying to bring up in our conversations has been, it's almost like a, past a certain point, there, there's almost like another dimension or something like a six, a six block building, the scale of that is such that maybe it was really impossible to capture a, a sense of whether that, whether our standards could actually make that be an acceptable design without potentially needing some tweaks or, or something else. And that's, yeah, that's, I think what would be, if that's a fair characterization Cynthia, that kind of, at some point, it's so big that it's hard to get captured maybe by.
By the standards, yeah.
I did just want to jump in here for a minute. We've got about three or four minutes until we're at time, until we're in our next agenda item.
Yeah, thank you. I guess maybe in, in closing, I, yeah, I wonder if, whether any other thoughts about this or if you, if the council, if you guys have any, anything else that you'd like to throw out there for the DLC to think about besides some of the things that you've mentioned already? Be interested to hear.
I'm not sure if it's really a DLC, a design standard issue or it's really just sort of, you know, elsewhere in the code, but I am, one of the things I'm concerned about, especially as we build bigger in downtown is bird safe window construction, window treatments, you know, because we are right next to the river and, you know, we're trying to grow a bigger tree canopy. And I think we need to be keeping that into our, in mind.
Okay. Okay. Well, gosh, on behalf of the committee, thank you guys for making time for us on, on your agenda. It's good to see you and it's always good to get these two groups together.
Yeah, you too. And thank you all for, for showing up. Interesting ideas. I look forward to the future conversations.
Great. Bye now.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up, North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Advisory Board. This will be presented by Kelly Brooks.
Hi, everyone. And also Councillor Parks, I'm hoping you'll, you'll chime in from time to time as well as Councillor Beatty. All right. I'm going to try sharing my screen. See? Is this over here? Okay. Do you see that? Okay. Great. Worked. All right. Go from the beginning. Okay. You all are very familiar with this topic, so this is going to go pretty quick. The reason why I'm bringing it to you again, I've mentioned it before, but our intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Rec actually requires some level of concern, concurrence with us on changes to the bylaws. And so the specific language is any subsequent substantive changes to the composition of the DAB will be reviewed by city council. And I believe we are finally at the point where we do, we, we need to send something to NCPRD to agree with the changes that are being made. I'd say we're almost there. I'll tell you, we're getting pretty close. So I just wanted to use this as an opportunity just to fill you in on where things are and what I think the major changes are at this point. So here is my very craftily updated NCPRD slide. I thought you all might like my very sophisticated artwork here. They were supposed to meet tomorrow night, but that got moved to the 28th. And I actually think this is okay. They're getting closer. And so that does mean though, there's only one meeting left. The Board of County Commissioners, which is also the NCPRD Board, gave a deadline a few months ago and they said, you all can go back and work on these bylaws some more, but you got to be done by the end of October. So this is kind of the last shot at getting them done. This is the membership that you all are familiar with that's in the current bylaws, which are still in effect. But as you know, we're problematic because Happy Valley is in there and Happy Valley is not the district anymore. So I won't spend a lot of time on this, but two, nine member board is what we have been working with. This is the big change that I think is most substantive in the bylaws. So there are, until I see all the changes, we're not going to come back with a letter. But at this point, I think the major thing I want to just check with you all is the, the change to membership. So now you're looking at an 11 member board. The city of Milwaukee has two reps. Our working assumption is that one of those is a city councillor. It's not specifically spelled out in the bylaws, I think, at this time, although it's been going back and forth on whether or not it says city councillor or it just stays silent and allows the city to appoint whoever it wants. But just know we have two seats. There's no restriction at this point on whether or not that can be a city councillor. And that isn't a deal breaker, has been a deal breaker issue for us is any attempt to say we can't have a city councillor. Yes?
Yeah, I think the last wording I saw was one of, one may be a city councillor.
Yes. Okay. So it does say maybe, okay. So maybe a city councillor. So a lot of detail still to be worked out on the, how members are actually appointed to this board and how they're screened. But the intention is, and all signs point still to the fact that the city appoints these two members. So sorry to belabor that point, but it's been a point of contention. Community centers get a rep. At this point, we only have the one, the Milwaukee Center, that's Joel right now. And, but they are broadening that term out so that if there's another community center that there could be, it would cover more than one. This next set is actually in response, these areas, two per area, is in response to the concerns that we brought back to the board. And we said, hey, you have all these unincorporated seats, but they're not divided up geographically at all. And we need to see some geographic distribution. Sorry about that. Dog's barking. And, and so I'm going to show you the map for that, which was also in your packet. The one in your packet might be a little easier to see. I'm sorry. It's as good as I could get. But essentially what, these were old sub-districts. So if you go back and into the deep archives of the Parks District Formation, there were these sub-districts and each sub-district was actually supposed to have like a park, like they were supposed to have their own parks board and they would send people to the DAB. None of those are really functioning that way right now, except for ours. But we, the boundaries worked. So when the committee looked it over and, and talking with Councillor Parks and talking with Councillor Beatty as well, we thought, you know, these, these boundaries aren't too bad. So they had a couple of different proposals, mainly shifting the lines between area one and area two. There was a, there was an alternative proposal for that. But for us, for the purposes of Milwaukee, it was about the same. But this gets at sort of the, the challenge and the issue that's been raised by our friends in unincorporated Clackamas County, that they wanted more kind of proportional representation. So you'll see that these, these areas are all roughly, you know, 20 to 22,000, we're the biggest, but they're all in that 20,000 range. So it splits them up in a more balanced way. So this is, was kind of the big, I don't know what appropriate Cold War term is right for this, but this was the, the big, everyone agreed on this. I'd say two meetings ago. Huh?
Dayton.
Yeah, dayton. Thank you, Councillor Beatty. I don't know. Yeah, dayton's probably the right word. Yes. So, so this kind of got put to bed. And I think this is the major thing though, that because membership is so core, that we would need to say, NCPRD Board of Directors, we're good with this. We're okay with this change. We concur. And so I have asked Scott Archer to get us some language about this so that we can respond to that. I have proposed a letter to NCPRD rather than doing an IGA edit right now, which I think would take forever. And we have more edits that we need to do to the IGA that are more substantive. And I don't want, I don't want to try to rush that through just to make this bylaws thing match right now. So they were okay with the letter. So my intention is to come back to you with a letter. I'm not doing it today because I don't have certainty that there aren't other substantive issues that might pop up on the 28th. So, you know, for example, if they said, hey, City of Milwaukee can never be the chair, that would be bad, right? And they haven't said that. But I mean, there could be some things that pop up that were like, we don't, we don't want to do that. And there are quite a few issues related to selection that are still churning. And so we're going to wait. I'm not asking you to tell me what you want to do today necessarily because I'm going to wait and see what else happens. But you had some time on your calendar today to look at this map. So I would like to know generally if this gets, if this addresses that kind of geographic balancing concern that we had, I don't know, eight or nine months ago. And if we're sort of moving towards concurring with at least this component of the, of the bylaws changes. So, go ahead.
I would add that, so there's eight seats there spread around and they assured us that they, so they've had their application period and they got 21 or 22 applications. And they assured us that they do have applicants from all of those areas.
Yes, thank you. That's a good, good thing to mention as well. There are quite a few dynamics that I'm not touching on about the terms of the people that are on the DAB that's meeting right now. And yes, Councillor Beatty is absolutely right, that they, they got really good applications in from across the district. So it sounds like we're, they're in a good place to fill the seats across the district and not leave those unfilled. So with that.
And also the two people who represent the unincorporated area and Ben Johnson, who also represents this west side of 205, were among the 22 people who applied for the positions that will be coming up.
So just, I mean, it's definitely do not want to throw a monkey wrench into it, but go, go back to the map for a second. To, to my mind, the purpose of having districts would be so that there were people sort of in the general neighborhood who were aware, because they try and walk to a park, that there are no parks or that their parks are bad or whatever. And some of these almost look like some of the really bad congressional districts in the country that are so badly gerrymandered. You know, you've got the folks clear over, you know, in Oak Grove up against the river. And then you've got in that same district, somebody who's clear over up against 205. Nobody's going to walk to a park from either of those, you know? It just, I'm not saying go back and fight to change it, but I think it was a little maybe lazy to choose an old map without sort of thinking that through a little.
Well, this is actually, I mean, I think this is actually a reworked map. This isn't so, I mean, this was reworked to get.
Not the old map.
This is not the old map.
It's not? Oh, because it really looks similar to the.
No. And the old map had a much, well, anyway, it was tweaked to get to 20,000, to get to equal sizes. But also at the last meeting, there were two, so areas one and two, there were two options. One had them split across east-west, like you're seeing here, and a different one had them split north-south, running more or less parallel to Oakfield Road or somewhere around there. I mean, I'll defer to WILDA, but my impression of the discussion was that, you know, this was what the people down who are representing those areas now preferred. Ben Johnson did bring up the sort of distance from New Ulamet to, to 205, but that didn't, that didn't really seem to sway the conversation.
Yeah, that's true. And there was a point in time when they were looking at using CPOs as the breakout, but there's only, out of five CPOs, there's only three that are active and a couple of, one of those isn't as active as the other two. And, you know, just a lot of.
What, in the side?
Static in the background because of stuff like that. And so what the, what seemed to be the most important factor in the other members of the DAB was that there be a representative person for each 10,000 people. And that if Milwaukee is its own entity and it has close to 22,000 people, then the others should have at least 20,000. And that's why the map is gerrymandered in some areas. It's to get to population more so than geographics, I might say.
Right. But they, they could have broken it into eight more districts and then had a single representative from each of those eight districts. And the districts would have made more sense. I mean, and they're going to run into the same issue that, that congressional districts run into, which is populations are going to change faster in some areas rather than others because they've got more developable land or they're more zoned for high, you know, multifamily residential or whatever. And then we're going to be, you know, doing this all over again in 10 years.
Well, the bylaws do say that if the population changes considerably, that, that, that part of it needs to be looked at again. So if Milwaukee goes to 30,000, then I'm assuming we would have three representatives instead of two. I mean.
So we are kind of assuming that, I think. And we're also sort of assuming that our eastern boundary is going to stay the same. And so my concern is about whether, you know, whether like, is this, you know, as we, as we continue to annex properties because they have to, you know, what does that mean? Does that mean that, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're continuing to grow, like our, our representation becomes, you know, sort of diluted more and more, you know, and then area four becomes more concentrated. And then Area 4 becomes more concentrated. Sorry, I've got some background noise here. But I think you understand sort of my concern. Is that, I mean, Kelly, do you see anything? I mean, I guess, you know, where do, how do we advocate to make sure that this will get revisited under a number of scenarios that we've talked about?
I think it has been discussed. And I think this is one of those details, remaining details, that needs to be locked down and confirmed. But we have, we have talked about making sure there's a mechanism to recognize population growth. So what timeframe are you reassessing the populations to make sure we're still balanced? Given that this driver has been all about proportional representation for population. So if, with that in mind, if it's changing, you need to have built-in checkpoints where you're checking the population and reallocating membership. So we did talk about that. I don't, we're not, it's not in there right now, WILDA. I mean, we have to, I mean, that verbiage is, is the draft to come, right? So it still needs to be worked out. And that would, I would, I think what I'm hearing from you is that's in our, you're not getting our letter list of things that you would want to see more detail on, to kind of, to kind of provide concurrence. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think there's got to be some kind of trigger in there about revisiting this. We can't just assume, you know, that that's going to.
I, I personally don't think that it should be left up to the census because you don't want to wait 10 years before you look at populations change again. Because it's going to change a lot faster than that, that's for sure.
Yeah, I believe you could too. I mean, American Community Survey estimates, I mean, there'd be a way we could maybe link it to that. Those are annual, so. Okay, I think that that, I think that that's consistent with the discussion that's been had around the table. It's just the work's not done enough for me to be able to tell you that it's resolved. But I think we can go, Councilor Parks, I hope you're okay. We've been going into that next conversation with that as an item that we need more certainty around before we can write you back.
Well, and you are expecting a revised version of these minute, of these bylaws this, later this week, right?
Absolutely.
Ahead of next week's meeting. So you could send those around and people could comment on that if they.
I can, I don't have high hopes that this is in there. But if I'm pleasantly surprised, just because it wasn't a major focus of the last conversation, it was the focus of the conversation before. We've had a little bit of kind of version issues happening. So let's see what's, what's there. I think it might require a specific push, but I agree that it's worth making. And it is something that we have, we're, we're on the record about it already. So it's, it's going back and reinforcing that as a closeout issue for us, I think. Anything else?
I did ask Kelly to cover one more topic before we are leaving here today. So if people are okay, I'd like to transition to that discussion.
Sure.
Okay, I must stop sharing because I don't have a presentation for this one. Okay, so I sent you all an email like a month ago. And I said, PBOT reached out to me and they said, they asked if I had any interest or we had any interest in sort of joining in with them in the regulation of TNCs. Those are transportation network carriers, that's Uber and Lyft. And so I was just like, you know, I'm going to have, I'm going to talk to them. I'm going to learn more about it, I'll keep you posted. So I have learned more, but we're at a point where I need your gut check on if it's worth kind of the time and effort that I think will come to you specifically. And also for Justin's time, because there's quite a bit of legal work on it. So essentially, it's what Portland does is they charge 50 cents a ride for trips that originate in Portland. And then they use those funds to, they run a pretty extensive database. They do enforcement, they run background checks to try to improve safety for folks that, similarly, because they were doing it on the cab side, so this is, makes it more equitable. And it's a service that they want to provide to Portlandians. So what, basically what we would do is we would need to adopt similar code. They would run it for us, we'd be opting into their system. So we would pay them 7.5% of any revenue that we receive and just to administer the program. They would give us basically the bill for Uber and Lyft. They'd say, this is what happened, here's what they owe you. And then we send a bill to them and say, hey, you owe us this amount of money. So two bills, once a quarter, is kind of the financial impact. There is some regulatory impact that I need, or some compliance impact for Tim. And I actually frankly need to work through that a little bit more to fully understand what the impact to him would be. Initially, it looks like that might be okay. So what I've learned on the staff side is not a lot of money, but maybe not a lot of time. So I think it, it might pencil. But to get to that, not a lot of money, but maybe not a lot of time, I need to go through you. And it would be probably after the first of the year, a couple of work sessions to make sure we get all the code straightened out and a hearing and then adopting it. So you'd be looking at a good, this would take up some of your time in January and February. So, and it would definitely take up some adjustments time. So I just wanted to put it before you, be really transparent. I don't want to keep going down this path if it's kind of not really worth it to you all or you have concerns about it frankly, just regardless of the financial side of it. So, yeah, I was going to throw it out there and just see what kind of direction you wanted to provide me on that front.
You know, I think sooner or later, it's going to become an issue. You know, we're going to see sometime in the next decade or two, the driverless cars and those being owned by some big company and running them all over the metro region and being on the early side of engaged, because that's what this will transition into, right? That, that same department, that same sort of thinking around regulation will transition straight out of this. I think being engaged early is always good. You know, it's the old saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu.
So why does PBOT want us? I mean, why now? Back when they first started, when Uber and Lyft first started being a thing and there was, they were licensing them and they had some fairly high-profile hearings about that. And I, at the time, I thought, you know, why isn't, I, I tried to encourage actually Metro to come up with a regional solution and be a regional convenor and not just let PBOT be the 800-pound gorilla. So why do they care now?
I think it's because there isn't a regional network. So the way it tends to work with any type of regulation is that you, once it starts actually becoming real and entrenched, then there's usually a statewide effort or some kind of preemption effort that would change that. And we're headed into a conversation where that might occur. So I think there, not just us, but other cities, looking for other partners that could potentially just start kind of making that regional.
And do you think other cities are inclined? Do we know what other city, where other cities are coming in on that?
I know of one that's about to do it supposedly, but I just checked their website and they hadn't done it. So there are, there is one major city that's about to, supposedly about to adopt it. But that's another thing that we would get a little more certainty of, I think, moving in. I think the January, February timeframe works a lot, works for a couple of reasons. One, finance is busy right now. They've got the audit going on and I don't want to break them. We have, you know, at least one new, you know, we have a new leadership coming in in terms of council that would want to participate in this conversation. And then I also think I'll know a little bit more about who's opting in and who's not opting in with respect to other cities at that point as well. So, yeah, right now I only know of, of one, but it is a major, a big city. So, and I know others are looking at it. But, yeah, they're looking for friends. Yeah, and that is something to consider because I do expect that this will be lobbied. So in terms of kind of, I would, I would expect people to come to this conversation from the other side as well.
Beyond the mayor's point about just being early and thinking about transition to driverless cars and things, does it, do you think it is, do you think it would lead to a change of relationship with PBOT on all kinds of transportation stuff, on the scooters, on the other things? Or is this just kind of its own thing?
I, so I actually think we have a pretty good relationship with PBOT. And I think that the way they approached this is, was in response to how hard scooters was. So I actually, for me, anyway, I mean, I think this, that's what I actually really appreciated about it is they scaled this for us. They didn't, they didn't say, you know, here, you can meet with all our staff and here's what we do with 20 staff. And if you, you know, and I know it's only going to generate this amount of money and it doesn't really work. They actually gave us, at the best of their ability, a plug and play, like a subscription option, which is what I wanted for scooters, to be honest. I wanted to just, let me use your database and your system and let us deploy here and partner and let me pay you a fee. And so the fact that they did that here actually is really, really helpful. So they've made it about as easy as they can make it for us, which I do appreciate. It doesn't mean it's the right thing for us. And it doesn't mean that what they've developed for another partner city is going to work for us. I mean, we've already, Justin's already looked and we've found some issues in that code. It, it's going to, it's not, we, our code's different. But it's light years different than I feel like where I was in the scooter conversation. So I think we have, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't reopen the door to the scooter conversation, that's my question.
Oh, I haven't asked. I had so few of them. I don't, I don't know about that. But I, maybe, you know, I think this has just a clear, I mean, it's kind of the calculus of like, okay, what would you charge? How much would it cost us to run it? Can we do it with existing staff? Yes, okay. And then what benefit does it bring to people in Milwaukee? Okay, you get more safety, right? You get an additional kind of layer of regulation and review of, you know, driver backgrounds and things like that that you don't get otherwise. So, but yeah, I guess, I don't, I think I'm giving you a weird, long, not answer to your question. I think we can partner with PBOT on almost anything. The, I don't know that the scooter system is shareable or if we want to go down the path of asking them to do that again in the future or not. I think the, the relationship we have would allow us to talk about that or anything else we want to talk about.
Yeah, I, I would, I would only say that this code is very, it's 27 pages of code. This is very much a Portland program that we would be adopting code. The time that I will need is to review that code, find out exactly what it does. It's very detailed and make sure it doesn't conflict with any of our existing code. So it's, it's, this is a Portland program that we would enshrine in our code. The draft code that I've reviewed thus far gives them, their quote-unquote, the administrator. So they are really kind of taking care of an awful lot of this. I wouldn't say, to get to your point, Lisa, I wouldn't say that this code has attributes that would be applicable towards scooters in the future. I think Kelly is right. What would get us to scooters in the future or any other program is the relationship. This, this is very specific and technical code, actually. I mean, there's insurance requirements, car requirements, all sorts of things that the drivers have to adhere to, that are all enshrined in this piece of code. And I gather the other jurisdiction that Kelly mentioned that's looking at this, they're looking at the code too, trying to figure out how they're going to make it fit and proposing changes. And Portland, I gather, has tried to tailor this program. And Kelly used the term "scale it down" so that they can reach out and grab some of these regional players to partner up with. So that would be my comment from a legal perspective.
I'm going to jump in for a couple of things. We're at time and this wasn't supposed to be a big discussion about the value beyond. Does council want us to look further into this and continue down this path? Or is it probably not worth the time? This isn't you deciding that you want to support it? It's saying you want to keep going or staff should spend their time elsewhere. So do you feel like you have enough to do that tonight? Or do you feel like we would need to come back and do a further conversation with you?
I think we have enough information. My only question is if the incentive for doing this is improved safety, are, I'm, how many drivers are only doing Uber and Lyft work in, in Milwaukee or Point South? You know, every, I think they're all doing work in Portland. So how many, how many of these drivers are not already captured by the PBOT system?
A lot of them are. I mean, for us, I mean, to be really blunt, it's revenue. It's revenue for us because you're right, most of the folks that are driving, are driving in and out of Portland and therefore need to, to meet these requirements.
So, and I don't know who uses Uber and Lyft in our community. I don't know if a 50 cent tax is going to disproportionately affect the people that we are trying the hardest to protect. I, I don't have a real clear sense from, from what you've said of how much time we're talking about, even though you gave us very specific numbers. I know that those targets often move the deeper you get into things. So, yes, there's definitely value in, in being in things early. I'm not, and, and maybe there's value in just going, sure, PBOT, we'll look at this because you approached us with it. And, you know, and, and value for supporting formation of that relationship. Beyond those two things, I, I don't, I don't see why now is the time.
And that's great. I think that we've done the PBOT part. We've looked at it, staff has shown them that we care. We have shown up at meetings to have that discussion. It's not a substantial amount of money, but I have, I'll just be really fair to Kelly. I have charged her with tiny mess of revenue trends that are appropriate. So this was her seeing one where we actually were reached out to by a partner. But I don't think anybody here is really wed to it one way or the other. So can we just get a thumbs up or thumbs down for continuing down this path into January?
Let me ask a clarifying question, because Kathy's question made me rethink what I thought I heard. So the 50 cents per ride is something PBOT is already collecting? Or this would be a 50 cents additional? Or they're just, no?
They're collecting it on trips that originate in Portland. So what we would be doing now is collecting it on trips that originate in Milwaukee. And then we would bill Uber and Lyft for those trips.
And that's all they go by is originate, not terminate or go through or anything?
Yeah, and actually, they've spent a lot of time trying to figure out if they could charge trip for the end because they get a lot of end trips. But you don't, they can't, they haven't even figured that out in New York. So my understanding is it's all about where it originates. So, yeah, they would, they, nothing would change about what they do. We would just, you would just then bring trips that originate in Milwaukee into it and charge.
So that's mine. I'm kind of on the fence.
Okay.
You'd go either way.
Yeah, I'm sort of that way too. I kind of feel like if, like, could I say, if it takes more than five more hours of staff time, just ditch it? I don't, I don't want it to be a rabbit hole for staff.
I have a question. Kelly, you mentioned something about there might be state, I mean, there might be interest in, like, what, what are we? I mean, what was that about? What was that comment about? There might be more, you know, bigger interest in this issue, you know, kind of.
From, from the TNCs to get rid of it. It's not a popular thing for Uber and Lyft.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there would most likely be legislation at the state level to preempt Portland's ability to continue to do this. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I wanted to make sure I wasn't understanding the reverse, which was some.
Oh, yeah, no.
Additional regulation of these industries to make them safer, that, that.
I think that'll be a part of it. I think that'll be part of the conversation. But I think that the impetus for that would be to not have Portland doing its own thing.
Councilor Faulkner, are you here?
I want to hear, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't want to shut it down because I am curious to know. I mean, I, I think, you know, Mary, Mark, you've got a lot. You seem to be really enthusiastically, thumbs up. And so I want to hear a little bit more about why, you know, other than the relationship stuff, because obviously that's important to all of us. And it sounds like, you know, staff is working on that already. But I'm, I'm more curious about sort of like what you see going forward as the ability to like further, you know, if we're engaged on this, on regulating them on this 50 cent origination fee, what does that open up? You know, what are we doing to make ourselves more prepared for, you know, the, the requirements that, you know, like the, the queuing types of problems that, that, you know, you're concerned about with driverless vehicles or the circling kinds of things that you're concerned about with driver, you know?
the circling kinds of things that you're concerned about with driver, you know? Why does this get us closer to that? I mean, I think that's a really important, you know, like, discussion, and I, you know, but I don't know if this is that.
Because it sets the precedent. It says cities do have the right to regulate this form of transportation. And as Kelly said, that this is what they'll be coming after, and we're not talking about small companies, you know, pounding on the walls of Salem, we're talking about huge, massive corporations with fortunes that can send a whole bunch of lobbyists. And this is, you know, it's going to be easiest for them when there are fewer cities engaged. And then once it's happened where the state has preempted, think about all the preemptions we currently deal with. At the time those went into law, everybody was like, who really cares? It's not really a dozen, who cares? So it went into law, and now we're screwed, because we can't, we can't deal with it when there's something that's really big, that matters, that we really care about being able to regulate. We're not allowed to, because it's been preempted, and it was preempted by, you know, an industry for their profits, period. And then now we're stuck with it. And I, this is, this is that moment in history where it doesn't feel like a big deal, but I'm telling you that Uber and Lyft will be, and other companies like them probably, will be the dominant transportation form in the future. And if at this point, we don't draw that line in the sand, and don't say that cities get to regulate, we probably will never have that opportunity again.
So just to be clear, though, we could, we could stand by Portland and oppose state legislation, whether we do this or not. I don't know that being part of this really makes us any stronger in that regard. Maybe, slightly.
If, if we're, if we're engaged in the, in the design of what it looks like, if we're engaged, you know, you guys, there's a lot of stuff we do better than Portland does. And if Portland is left on their own to do this, it may turn out good, it may not turn out good. I have more faith in our team getting it right, to be completely blunt, and this will cost me friends, but that, that we will be more likely to get it right if we're engaged, and we're, we're at the table, and we're in those conversations. And I do think this is that moment in history where we could end up, you know, not us, obviously, none of us will be on council, but 20 years from now, there's going to be some council that's really angry that they have no way to regulate the driverless car companies.
Where would we use this money?
Transportation.
TBD. Yeah, I mean, that's a part of the conversation, is how, what you would use it for. And they have it, they-
Where's Portland using the money?
They were using it to mainly administer the program, for when I think I can go get their specified uses. I believe the city that's looking at it right now was planning to use it for code enforcement, financial administration, and transportation planning. So, you know, TSP, that kind of thing. Yeah, so this would be a pretty small amount of money for us, so we wouldn't want to dice it too much, but it is something that I would be talking, we'd be talking to you about, is, okay, now you have a revenue source. Where's it go?
So what I heard Mark just describe, does that represent your understanding of the amount of staff time it would take to do, to go through this process? Because what you described to me sounded more like we would be signing up for a pre-baked thing that PBOAT is handing us, provided that it all checks out on the legal front.
I think I'm, I'm gonna go for the middle. So I think they are trying to give me a pre-baked thing, and they've worked really hard to give me a pre-baked thing. But what I already know is that there's a lot of work that we still need to do, and a lot of that work's gonna be Justin's work, sorry, Justin, and that's why I'm talking to you, because Justin's your, your attorney. So I think we would need to spend time, and I, my hope is that we could keep that time limited to that January, February timeframe. But I would ask upfront that if it, it starts creeping out past, like, if it starts turning into a seven, eight, nine-month, I mean, that we would probably say, no, no, that's a lot. But, you know, I would try to manage it so that we would keep it contained to that, to that timeframe.
But Councilor Hesley, just to go back to something you said earlier, this is more than five hours worth of work. So this is, this is real work, and Justin has a lot of things, Kelly has a lot of things on her plate too. So I guess for me, I'm looking at all the things on her plate right now, and I'm saying, is this the kind of space you want to spend our time? And I'm just not seeing a whole lot of enthusiasm other than the mayor. I'm, we've worked on this in part because we wanted to see where it would go. We can come back and do a quick staff report if you want to, but I do want to give you all a quick break before dinner, because we are expecting to be here till 10:00 tonight. So we need to cut this here. No, you're great, I asked you to do it. But I guess the question is, do you want us to do a staff report and continue this conversation before we spend much more time? Or do you want us to proceed with spending more time, or do you want us to call it?
I don't need a staff report.
What would the, what would the staff report do? Basically, just buy us more time to continue this conversation?
You all can, and Kelly can grab some information that you've already asked tonight, that we didn't have at our fingertips. But it would probably be us writing to PBOAT and saying, hey, we're gonna hold for at least another month on further conversations about this until we get better direction on where, where people want us to be. Kelly, or Lisa, yes?
That makes sense to me, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, with that. I want to, I, there might be some additional questions that pop into my mind that, you know, sway me a little bit more from where I am right now.
The staff report?
Just staff report for now.
And it basically, it's answering some questions about where revenue goes, and then also maybe just a little bit more of a formal schedule of like, okay, if you do it?
Yeah, a little bit of an outline, you know, and I mean, I mean, if it's 20-plus pages of code, you know, it's probably not very valuable for me to read that, but a distilled, you know, something that I can actually like sink my teeth into and think about questions, and I mean, I think that that might help me. And revenue projections?
Yeah, those are squishy.
And maybe suggested uses, because it's, you know, it's a big, say, like, TSP plan. I mean, great, okay, that, you know, but like you said, dicing it up too much, and then it becomes insignificant and not worth our time.
Yeah, okay.
If you've got a way to figure out how to answer that question about who really uses Uber and Lyft in our community, but I know that that is information that they probably don't want to freely share it with us, so, but I do, you know, I do have that nagging equity concern around, around this piece, because I, my impression is that the people who need Uber on a regular basis are probably people who have mobility issues and can't drive, and some of our guests and residents at Hillside Manor may be relying on Uber and Lyft, so, yeah.
And potentially the drivers themselves. Right. I think raising the equity lens to this conversation is incredibly valuable. I can't answer the questions, but just saying it's an outcome that you would expect that you have to consider and figure out to be successful is, is important, so. Okay.
That Portland has done a little bit of that analysis, and we can probably make some assumptions there. So whatever they've, you know, I mean, I, I mean, that's just, that's, bringing that kind of a lens into a, a program like this would have, I mean, I would, I would expect to have some research already on that. It might not be Milwaukee-specific, but might have some value.
Okay, I will say, this is me spending a little more time on it, so this will probably, I think this is about eight hours, but I will do it, and we'll, I'll do that, and then I'll get it back to you, and we'll schedule kind of a quick debrief on it, and then you can say, yes, please continue, and bring it back to us in January, February or not. Does that sound good? Okay. Thanks, guys, go eat your dinner now.
So this concludes our work session. We will be back in 16 minutes.
Oh, my God.